Yeah, we can hear. All right, this is a, um, there's an informal work session. We're going to discuss, uh, let's see here, what was before us and changing the zoning? And there's a question that we legally can do this. It is within the powers of the city to zone property inside the city limits. Legally, it can be done. There's a lot of things in life that are legal, but whether or not they're right, that is the, uh, that is what we decide. Um, throughout history, there have been things that are legal at the time. I mean, you know, digress to the, um, the sixties. Uh, that was legal at the time, but whether it was right or not. That's, uh, that's, that was determined to be the case. All right, um. We also have what the city council and mayor wish to do. I take it each little month they're bringing it for us because we have the recommendations of the zoning professionals that have degrees in zoning. And they understand. Their recommendation is to zone out parcels to be zoned in the main section or four. I believe Scott put it over the, the, uh, the folks that have degrees of, uh, of professional. Uh, I personally don't see, um, or they say you can leave it to also, but they said we wouldn't leave that in our four. Um, that's what I think on. So any questions I have to answer, they will go on to listen. Over there. This is a petitioner or the property owner. Well, do you, uh, are you here representing them?
Yeah, Justin and, Justin is the property owner and, uh, and I'm their designated agent, I guess.
Will, just to stay, well, to get off.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell them. This one's automatically on, right?
Yeah.
That's all good. Yes, uh, my name is Justin Pearson with Ball Ventures, which is the partner in the BBC High Point ownership structure with BB as Zoom. And this is Eric Tyson, who also participated in our meeting last month. And, uh, yeah, I did have, uh, Will here with me from Civil Southeast Engineering, who also submitted a new application just this morning on our behalf, uh, as well as Jim Edwards from, uh, Baltimore, being, it's, it's part of our, our little team. Um, yeah, I'm not sure how much detail you'd like me to go into. Uh, I think, um, our position, uh, reiterate, I guess, some of the things we discussed last, last month when we were here. Uh, we certainly agree with, with Scott, the City Planner's recommendation, uh, the rezoning of the, the out parcels, which is what our, our new application has done. We have petitioned to rezon those two lots, uh, to B2, which was our intent and, and plan with those lots all along. Um, and so that's, that's, that's ongoing and that's, that's moving forward. We also created a recommendation of lot C, that could be a parcel remain, uh, designated article.
Uh, now, we only have to add on the R4, is that correct? Lot C, lot, lot C. Or what portion is going to be, um, what would it say, I guess? FAR, off the combination of, not the, uh, ballpark with ball or FAR.
So that, that graphic was, was shown to represent the interaction with the potential school that we intended that a portion would be, that there's no lot left to drawn or redrawn at this point to have a distinction, uh, but we intend that there would be collaboration. We feel it's consistent in this use of, of our force consistent with the comp plan, uh, as far as having mixed use, not just solely commercial, uh, which changing it back to B2 with, um, a High Point vacancy that we're still working on. Uh, with an additional, uh, commercial use, which would be difficult to develop in this climate. And so to that end, I think it's most beneficial for the shopping center itself, rooftops, you know, tenants, prospective tenants need rooftops. There's often looks at market studies that indicate how many rooftops in the proximity. And so I think it'll also benefit High Point substantial amount to get more homeless in their proximity.
And you, you brought something before Scott to the other next meeting, correct?
Don't want to go into details of that at this point.
Well, you got before the, the parcels that you posed in the zone business. That's the, the parcels that you had originally thought were to be business to begin with. And checking the city setup, that's, that was what they were planning to be a city had originally thought as well, correct? Scott, is that?
There you go. When the first application came in, when they applied, all the paperwork included the whole 38 acres. Now, when the previous petitioner was, was talking to us and the council commissioner, he, he did state he, he intended to leave the stuff on the, on the old farm side of that.
So just for clarification, what they're proposing now is what we collectively thought was going to happen in permission.
Uh, I think so, at least that was what was discussed. And, and Mr. Barrett did turn in an application yesterday to rezone that this lots A and B, it's the two.
Correct, of course. I just wanted to, you have somebody lined up to, to build something, knowledge for the corner.
Correct, yeah, they, they came to our last meeting. Um, obviously, we're, we're a bit of a holding pattern while, while this issue is resolved as far as additional, uh, work they're doing on there until we get this matter. So, but yes, we do have.
What is their level of commitment, property in a contract or some kind of letter of intent?
Correct, and we are beyond letter of intent and before contract, um, because of a little bit of uncertainty now as to fully execute. And so we're still negotiating some of those terms.
Is that from the parcel shown or the flat here of the chosen respective parcels? Or is that contract contemplated the entire?
It is for lot C, so the, the 30 acre, not the R4 portion. It's, it's value is in its R4 zone.
Just the whole parcel, not just this, not just the designated parcels?
Correct.
Do you have enough playing once you've got on the map to, so that when you start getting to the code analysis, planning, then we can address issues, it may be for other means of egress, things like that out of there?
Absolutely, that, that will be, I know that was exposed, and again, on, on the last time around, that was an important point of discussion, and yes, it will be addressed and satisfied that way as well when it comes to that point.
But I mean, the whole reason I'm asking now is, you know, before you lock in on something, something wise that you, that you have, you know, be aware that you, it's, it's not just the zoning issues, it's, it's codes and order system required. Be aware of that, we can, you know, meet with staff if you need to, to handle that.
Yes, absolutely, that's, uh, part of our intent and getting Will involved in this history and experience with this site specifically, anytime you want. You know, but I think, I think that's very much our intent is to, uh, develop this in a way that I think really is in line with mostly current, post complex, true mixed use. See the shopping, potential school, residential and retail, it's a real combination that could be very successful. I'm going to take additional questions for, so now.
What, what type of apartments are you going to put on these, just can you kind of describe?
Sure, um, and we had more, more detailed plans from, from the last meeting and I can get Scott to pull them back up if you'd like, um, but market rate, high quality, market rate apartments.
I don't know, do you not know what I'm talking about, Professor? Um, is there some kind of special tax of something with this property regarding apartments?
Not the, right. Opportunity zone, maybe? Uh, I think it may be a pop, an opportunity zone, which is a tax, so it is as a credit for a, for a developer or someone who improves the value of, I think, the, the state governors who identified these locations.
And are you required to build certain something because it is an opportunity zone?
As I understand it, the value of the property within an opportunity zone has to increase. I want to say more than double. I'm not an expert on opportunity zones per se, but, uh, it's typically used in land development because of that, because it's meant to improve the property itself. Um, so land development would meet that criteria. But if there's not a specific type that needs to be built on it, as I understand it. If I left anything out, Will certainly come correct me.
No, I think you, I think you've covered it.
Do you have some more renderings or more plans or you've got them on here?
Um, I, I think what you have there is, is.
Oh, that's what this is.
Is from the last.
And refer just how many units were you?
So that they haven't, uh, again, so we would be selling this land to the developer. Um, and so they, they've, they've played with various site plans and then level of number of units on the property, but they have not gone beyond that while the zoning remains in question, I guess.
So what they have calculated or whatever is based on what is shown in that rendering of the ball field and all that.
Right, probably a maximum capacity, uh, would be phased in, you know, as market demands it. If they're, if they're building and they're not being filled.
Well, but they're doing it on premise that that other part of the property is recreation, right?
Correct, that's the intent. Can I ask a quick question? Yes, curious, so just to talk about some constituents and whatnot. Have there been any other ideas that, I mean, I, I know we're talking about apartments, but the other potential ideas that have come up that maybe that plan could have been used for something different? Um, you know, these kind of questions, I'll be constituents other than just apartments, sir. Anything else that's come up or potentially, you know, maybe somebody will knock on your door while trying to talk to you about some other ideas or? There's been a talk, but no other groups of workforce offers, um, you know, to, to the extent that we have with the, but no, we've not reached any serious stops in the parts.
Any other questions? Additional?
I don't know if this is the venue for the new application to be discussed or, or not, but if that, that has.
Well, you can discuss that, absolutely. Well, we can't hear you loud, but you can tell me about it.
Well, uh, I referenced it earlier, you know, just that it's consistent with, with the recommendation from City Planner, that's in fact, it's almost those two parcels of one seat, uh, as residential. I think it's the, or our perspective, our opinion, and I think it's both for the benefit of High Point itself. I think we'll, we'll, we'll grow and do well with this, leaving it this way and following through this application. I think there's, um, very, great potential for, for High Point in general, but anyway. Thank you.
Mr. Chu.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Scott, that'd be out, um, the parks, the landfill, they turn into parks. That takes, those come more planned commission as well.
I think what you're talking about, that's probably more about like the, the city's doing. And I, I think if, uh, it is private and the developer wants to do some of it, we make sure it fits.
What is classification of a park?
Spinning on the spot, let's see if, um, well, if they are, for example, recreational would certainly allow a park.
I think it shows, uh, I think it shows a lot of good, good effort if, uh, the section that showed they presented that it's owned, that they are, same time to print out parcels. So, uh, any questions, uh, as we change back to B2?
Uh, yeah, FAR certainly allows parks, playgrounds, fields, et cetera. Now, all our zones do allow, uh, playgrounds and parks as well, so. But they could certainly request that FAR is owned and, and that would limit the other pieces on it.
Sure, and I'm not sure the distinction necessarily, um, I, I don't think the intent was necessarily public parks. I think it was intended to represent school facilities, um, and things like that. So I'm not sure there's a difference, uh, city park per se.
I mean, it's still just like, uh, I would imagine the tax basis might be a little bit like that, they are. So it would be advantageous to, uh, move to that. Um, and if it, if this is the mayor, uh, that might be something that you would consider doing and, and figure out a lot of lines or if you get an idea of a lot of line that needed to be moved, you can consider. But, uh, could, could be a good, but you allow that to readjust our application or what kind of?
I, I believe that, so what they applied for yesterday would, would be on March agenda and I don't know that that'll happen yet, but it is probably not past March, so they can certainly.
That might be something to consider, if it is past that line. Wait, what I'm thinking is about like that.
Yeah, the commission, uh, again, how zoning works is it's, uh, planning permission makes a recommendation to council. So the commission could certainly recommend, you know, what you want.
And they are, uh, uh, design flat line once she figured out what it is, so.
I'd prefer it to be, you know, spit it out and, and describe well. You know, we need that, but again, the, the planning permission makes a recommendation to council, council. That's what they will.
Yeah, that's what. Absolutely.
Yes, definitely. Happy to entertain all these, all of us feedbacking, certainly looking into it, um, on all fronts. Again, this, this is, this specific drawing was, you know, highly contingent on the school becoming a reality, which has some challenges, you know, from, from the department source and center and things of that nature. So certainly we'll explore all options, but if we're unable, unable to, you know, put things together on the school front, which we're attempting to, um, I, I think overall, I just think, just want to reiterate more time that all of this is possible. I think it's experience zoning, it is a comp plan, I think it's going backwards. So I don't know who has taken the game, you know, from the point of view of the general, general business. I think we're open to exploring all those options and wanting a good mixed facility.
That's all. Is there any other questions or concerns or comments from the day of planning?
I have one more question. As I understand it, the contract with the apartment developer only contracts a phase of roughly 192 units, not, uh, two phases of, not 200 units or 400 totally, is it really just looking at the initial phase? What they are contracting with all 38 acres?
So the contract itself doesn't stipulate the exact number of units?
Right.
Um, and so it is for the full 30 acres, um, the, the contract, it, it won't be sold in pieces, I guess, if that's your question. We're, we're not selling it in, in phases to that, it would be.
Well, what, what would be the, uh, outcome, we, we did the split zoning concept that we're talking about, where you've got the C2 on the front, R4 for some acreage, roughly 12 acres, and the balance of the property is FAR or whatever comes out. They, uh, continue the contract for the full 30 acres, subject to the FAR portion being rezoned or something that they would use, is that something you think you could negotiate with them?
It would certainly be, it would, it would change the discussion now that they didn't purchasing 12 acres of usable property or other than 30. I think the intent was always to incorporate something, uh, that interacts with the school. So specifically, if it'll be broken out in the contract, this portion of this, some of this, this, I'm not sure.
Well, this would give you the opportunity to get the initial phase done. And if we're FAR, then you'd have to come back in with a plan of attack, whether it be the school and other complexes or apartments, maybe a different developer.
Right.
But it would get the initial, uh, job done and still give you the flexibility for the future. It's what I think we're, we're trying to offer.
Right.
So I have to have a bunch of time. So for all of you, Heather? All right, Dr. Thomas?
I'm going to ask a question right quick. Yeah, since the property owners posing the, those parcels being, being the rest of the paint. The city, as the original petitioner changed this, was this, was the petition under spot on? On, I mean, is there a counter argument in the city before the next planning commission? Or, or does that satisfy the cities? Okay, who was the original petitioner? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's right, well, this matter, if I can comment a minute ago, but you thought it was more powerful that we, they did split the R4 and the, and the, the, what are the ball fields, would they? That they are portion or did they split out the old? What would you say?
I, I didn't say powerful, but, um, you know, one of the, uh, things.
Some of the challenges that we're going to have up here, and I guess I will just reiterate this somewhat going back a little bit on green spaces, how important it is to, for our job up here to know what's going on is, however, where we're very, very important. Part of our job up here is about protection of the, of the community, where the best of community is whole, our community, like McCall Ridge, which is also a community. But part of our role is to help watch out and help preserve all of that. Some of the information that we need, needs to be real, real accurate, obvious, open, communicated properly and obviously. That way, when we vote, we know what we're voting on, community knows what is, see coming down the road, coming down the pipe, self speak, and, um, and when I talk about the green spaces here, this isn't just about apartments. This is about building, I want to get, it came up here in the last, um, planning commission meeting. Our, our plan going to speak in the fight. But green spaces need to have the identification, exactly what they are, so we all know. If we're talking about rezoning a piece of property for the future, for the future, we need to really know what it is. And, and in some cases, our hands are, are, are tied to it. That's why I think it's so, so, so important for these, these shuttle ready projects, of course, because it's a lot of McCall Ridge situation. That tours in that, uh, community of ours, whenever those apartments came up for development, even though they had been rezoned 20 plus years prior to that. Times change, so where apartments might be good or houses might be good, or whatever might have, this might be good. Now, if they don't get developed now, things change. So our, our comp plan is so important, our comp plan is not the end all, be all. It is a guideline, so like the budget is, it is there, there to be, to be used to help the others. But it's timing and situation, and we have to take everything in perspective. So it's, um, um, what I've actually heard is not what we can expect. What I've actually seen is not what we can expect, uh, from what I've been told about the drawings. You know, when we, when we zoned this property two years or so ago, we had the devil come down here and he found us a lot. And I think that's what have a lot, lot of us sold on that. And now what I'm hearing is these are artist renderings, that's great. So I think it would be a good, good paid effort if, uh, that one section that they have shown that, uh, that it goes up to Parkland and, um, I just want to invite, uh, both the council and someone like that. Thank you for that, uh, for that.
Yeah, Dr. Thomas, you got.
Just a couple of comments. This body decides to recommend to essence, what you're talking about is now sub to the, um, and a part of it to be FAR. Obviously, that has to be well defined as to what kind of park, but equally important, um, you have to plan for whether or not the school part works out or doesn't work out. Does the ingress and egress, we, the fire codes that, that, uh, Mr. Johnson is talking about, which is obviously a point of, of extreme importance. So all of that detail needs to be worked out ahead of time before your body votes on it so that you know what kinds of things can go on in that FAR. Because remember, parks are allowed in any R also, as well as FAR and FIRE, right? There may be in some business zones, some areas of, of recreational kind of thing. So all of that needs to be worked out, um, prior to your body meeting and going into a vote. I just don't want to see the oops that happened last time where those two parcels on Old Farm Lane accidentally got rezoned the wrong zone. So that, that's my only input.
Thanks, okay.
Uh, Chris, I, I have another question, I'm sorry, um, come March, or, you know, that's my commission, are we going to have some requests? Are we going to have one in February from the city to zone it? Be whatever, and then turn right around in March and have another one to rezone? Or is the original petitioner going to, uh, withdraw that request or table it or, because I mean, basically now we have two different competing requests for resuming, and then it would be wiser if we could come to some resolution between the petitioner and property owner and start the process the first time we know where we want to get it. That's question number one, and now I've got one other follow up on that.
Well, right now, so the, um, the request right now, it was, it was read in at the last planning commission meeting. So it'll be in the old business of the February 18th, purchase second. I said motions fair, it's been read in, so planning permission was decided to do that February. So one, the, that was given to us yesterday, that, that'll be, I, I suppose, an interquest, it depends on what happens. But talk about procedural, please. For any rezoning, let's say the February 18th, uh, meeting, the planning commission makes a vote, sends our report to planning, to the city council. The council won't hear it until the March 2nd meeting. That's when they'll kind of first reading and then they'll set the public hearing. The public hearing won't be until probably the April 6th, the public hearing, uh, for the council to consider. So it, it is a timeline, uh, several weeks before an action happens.
Okay, I, I guess I can't figure out what's, what's the best course of action or, uh, as I said, the best way I have, one petition going one way and one petition trying to bring it back with modifications. So I can, um, and regardless of what the zoning is, there's nothing in zoning that specifies how much green space per acre or any of that kind of stuff, that's correct. Maybe what we need to look at in the near future, very near future, is either by city ordinance or something. We could look at what we have adopted or our problem maintenance code for our, uh, green space. We could look at what we have adopted or our property maintenance code for our green space, whatever that falls in. And the city needs to establish an ordinance. It would be more than just a recommendation, but more of a guideline that has to be followed for us. Things such as parks, green spaces, because it is very subjective, the way it is now. You get an artist rendition, to use your term, this is how much green space you're going to have, but the finished product, a lot of times is different than that. So maybe that's what we need to look at our our ordinances and say, this is going to be how it is. Regardless of your plans will be approved with exception. And I would go so far as to say, even looking into the property maintenance code that we have now, it leaves a lot. I know I've coached written, it leaves a lot to the city side. And that's where we could make amendments to that to specify certain things for existing properties. So that all our forceful support. That's, I mean, helpful, something to consider.
Well, just so I'm clear on that, I'll get you just.
Are we have we moved from green flat from apartment to green space? The mayor mentioned that earlier, is our, our, we see on paper and actual uptown parks and green spaces, so that's. But I'm good with three, I can about green spaces, but I guess my point is no matter what we zone this. At the next, uh, planning commission meeting, the council, and then the following month. My concern is that's not going to satisfy what the mayor was talking about for. So I think that's where we need to look for other enforcement tools. That are in essence law by city ordinance, this is this is what we're, or that has to be done. So that when regardless of what's presented to us on a nice free piece of pavement, when it goes to planer review process at staff level. That's that green space or park or whatever is just as important to consider as second and third means egress of subdivisions. It's enforceable by ordinance. That would require much more than just willing to do that in this way.
Yeah.
Thank you. That just follow up, and we've already had discussions, some guy had discussions on that and actually trying to get some kind of fly from scale. It comes in real low and it's a small amount of green space. It's even as in my mind, I think it's at a certain level of my active mandate, there's got to be some type of park. And so.
Yeah, yeah, something's about to happen now, or on the park scale. The homeowners association may name their courses, the city, or is there a way to distinguish those things? Because in our, we don't really have a homeowners association. We have John Lee that does all the work. She maintains whatever green space we have, and she doesn't get a job out of it. I'm a commander on that, but. It would, you know, if they just have default homeowners association, what happens to the green space?
Well, just one example, that was the what in Soho. Right now, new subdivision comes in, subdivision has to create a management program. So basically, a decision bond and the HOA is required to maintain that. The developer, I think, and I Scott, and I mean, they have to put up some money to invest growth. And so, you know, there's something for us to move on that completely intensively. But so I think there's some some good solid follow up in the future. Again.
But and just a while, I hope all of which was known for the audience team, you know, that we've already, as part of the conference plan contract, included a rewrite of those zoning orders. So that discussion's begun with the consultant and very soon the commissioner start hearing some some ideas. That's a, I may say the future, but it'll be the near.
Just a couple of points regarding green space, because I know that you have to work on that as defining what green space is. But there are already in our ordinance provisions for anytime a residential zone of us. Certain other types of zones there, for instance, are at twenty foot, what's called buffer zones, some of them with germs. And then there's landscaping subdivision requirements, because you're talking about subdividing. And that has a certain degree of plants that have to be a certain number of footage and that kind of thing. So there are some things, but keep in mind that for the zoning adjustment can also grant a variance on some of those requirements. And then the last point is, if you need to work on this some more and come to some mutual win-win situation. Keep in mind that the planning commission is not required to make a recommendation. So under Alabama law, this body could decide to make no recommendation to the city council. And perhaps doing that while you work out whatever is mutually agreeable. So you don't have to make a yes or a no recommendation to what the petitioner has. I mean.
Just just to follow up on the comments about green space and city ordinances, we're full support of of that concept of green space. I mean, it would only help a apartment complex if there's green space. I mean, if there's trail system, I mean, all these things, that's a good representation of government ordinances helping something better than what's before. So we're in full support of ordinances that promote green space and different things like that. This park specifically was was drawn and represented at the request of our potential buyer and developer. So they were they were already willing to to commit to a portion of it not being used for the apartments, which is obviously. It's it's intended use, it's zone for that, and they could legally shouldn't, but they could legally compound them in there as far as as far as they could. And so we're certainly not bored with creating something that has trail systems, green spaces, and furniture. I can't say we're going to sit here and commit that work of those fifteen acres being lopped off and adding FAR. We need a little bit of flexibility to sufficiently negotiate and feel that makes sense. And this was a their request, you know, that's 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 their intent. Our our intent is to sell it as it is now and over. I don't have to have, but we're all supporting that's ordinances and green space and collaborating with trail systems.
I'm looking at the capital system. You have the right. Producing it. Chair.
Yes.
So follow up on your comment, and you're not interested in negotiating.
No, I guess I am interested in negotiating, that's it. I said, at this point, we're not saying we're going to allow. We've sworn out about fifteen acres, so of course, resulting in completely. I'm not committing to do exactly that.
Would it be appropriate if they did present something written on or what they would be willing to? Change the patent?
As far as the result? Well, again, the the deadline for the March meeting, which is the next available meeting would be is probably a couple of weeks. So it's the deadline's a month prior to the meeting, so it's roughly around the time of the next meeting. I don't have the calendar in front of me, so you've got time to end your application.
So so our application refers to lots in B. We have not applied for any resulting of lots C, which is a portion of land questions. I guess I'm a little confused.
Well, I took it as your application, I think. So is that, I'm sorry, maybe was that the question, the city's application or their?
Well, it's their property and but if you go by application, it's.
Would you be, would you be willing to withdraw your application if we gave some type of agreement? I think that might be what he's suggesting, and that could be part of the equals here.
There's something before us. Probably. If we could not recommend it or are just.
I mean, at the next, February, maybe two weeks.
Yeah, there was something before us, but if the petitioner came to us and said, we wish to withdraw that particular island, is there a way? Would you have motion or we could just?
Yeah, you can certainly withdraw. And and I think I think you could you could modify your recommend, well, you have not made a recommendation. You could you can structure a recommendation to include the FAR change. I I would say, let's go ahead and do the public hearing and all that at the at the meeting. Then the planning commission, whatever that recommendation is or isn't, what it is. We'll type that up and then send that as the report to the city council.
Okay, but. We have the actual recommendation that's before us and we can then add our foundation, what you're saying.
I believe so.
Or if the petitioner says, hey, I don't need to have a recommendation before us, but we like to possibly remove them. Could they do that?
Yeah, the petition to withdraw.
Yeah.
So the motion's been read in, again, I'm not a commentator, I only got too deep into that, and I can answer it, but. So the motion's been read, it's been made, and it's just, it's still going to actually take one.
If the landlord has a use for the property, they're bringing it before us the next month, maybe we ought to give them opportunity to show us what they want to do.
And that's.
A petition or withdrawal, that they don't have to wait a year, and they like to.
Yeah, I think the the year timeline starts when the city council considers it. So so the year thing, until it hits the council doesn't start. And even with that, the the council, the commissioner, rather, could decide if conditions have changed and it's short. But yeah, it's the city council consideration that starts the year.
But but to be fair, then the request is that we we bring forth a plan. To to defend our current zoning. Because on the simple, it's R four.
Yeah.
By this body, city.
And that's our four.
And so our developer. Right, and then our developer and partner. Obviously, I have a lot of questions about if this is going to happen, the moratorium on the on the property as well as active to give example to the city.
Yeah.
To to get them to commit to make further or detailed plans is is difficult and it's. But yeah, if that's what you're asking, we'll be on the product to my best.
Okay, then go ahead. I think it would be good if, okay, as the property owner, you don't want this to be resold. And petitioner in the city wants to resell it against your will. So I think it's, I guess what I was kind of hoping to get out of here today, and I've not yet, but. The argument from both sides, in my opinion, you're the property owner. Your argument should weigh heavy with with us, because this is your property. That's what our nation's founded on is is those rights. So you have rights to your property within reason. Obviously, you can't put meth out there, but it's your property. So I feel like we have to be very cautious when another petitioner, even if it's the city, which I worked for, I won't say last year. Wants to resum the more property against your will. So, yes, I definitely would like to hear an argument from you saying, this is not what I want. And even if your argument's not valid, the fact it's not what you want should still weigh heavy on me. I also need to see or hear why the city, why it will benefit the city to force a zoning against the property owner. More than just, you know, we need to protect whatever, because zoning property all back to business. Is how is that going to protect the property? I need, I need, I need to understand why I should recommend doing something against a property owner's will. And I would go so far as to say specifically what what the city would like to accomplish by doing that. Other than to make you have to come back to petition again. So I've I've got some concerns about the process, like I said, I've been on planning commission a few years, I've never seen this one. I've usually hearing why we shouldn't allow them to resell their property to something else. I've never heard why we should push your zoning against your will. So I'm going to hold the world here, not that smart to begin with. And then when you throw this at me, it's really got me messed up. So I I only want to. I don't want to vote one way or the other until I have a little more facts in the process. And if the petitioner, being the city, wants to push this. Then it needs to benefit city of record as a whole. And I'm all ears, but I need I need to think about that. So I don't know if that's something we can propose today, or if we need to wait until next year, or whatever the case may be.
I'm going to agree that labor and free market and and. The lives of the individual, the property, and. Yes, sir.
Is he done?
Can you unmute it?
Okay, good, sorry, I wasn't allowed to. Yeah, if I if I might, I just have a a couple of comments. I really appreciate the last comments that were made. And again, I thank you for letting me participate by Zoom. I'm I'm kind of hearing about half of what's going on. I it's it's hard to to follow everything, but I really appreciate being here. Just a couple of thoughts from my perspective that I think really, you know, the the last person that just spoke, I apologize, don't know your name. I think that rung true with me, I guess. The first question I have is, we we keep talking about the city being the petitioner. Who who exactly is the city in this case? Is it because you have a staff report that recommends against what's being proposed? You have a staff report that recommends keeping the zoning, changing the two small lots to commercial and keeping the the thirty acres at residential. So is does the staff represent the city? You have the mayor wanting to make this change. So is that the mayor representing the city against the staff? Or is it the mayor representing or petitioning personally? That's the part, I guess, that I'm having a little bit of difficulty with is is who is really recommending that we make this change? Because we, as the property owners, certainly aren't recommending it. We have a hard time, the other thing that we're in a little bit of a difficult situation with is you you you're asking us to make commitments today based on. Things that we just don't know, and we have a hard time getting the answer with the the things that are outstanding. It's it's really hard to get anybody to want to spend a lot of time and money working on something when they don't know if we can even, if we're even going to be allowed to do it. So I guess the other question I have is, you know, depending on who who we define the city as, what does the city gain by zoning this back right now? It's it's currently zoned. We are working on a deal to make something nice happen here that will increase the tax base of the city, get some development going in that area. The only thing that I can see that is gained or happens by making this change is it ensures that this property sits vacant for some long period of time. And while it's up in the air, it's hard to get anything done. If if the zoning is allowed to stay where it is, we can continue down this road and try to get some of this stuff figured out. And then we would have to come back or the developer would come back at some point for a site plan approval for entitlements. When a lot of these green space issues could be dealt with at that time. The other issue is my understanding there's a moratorium. So again, when I come back to what's gained by changing the zoning back, we can't do anything while this moratorium's in place anyway. So again, what what does anybody gain by changing it right now? My understanding is we're waiting for the revised comp plan. That will probably decide what happens with multifamily development at that point within the city. So so why not just let us move ahead and try to figure something out with the zoning that's in place, other than the small two front lots? And then when the moratorium is is lifted, if it's lifted, if the comp plan supports it, then we we move forward at that point and decide. You know, do we go forward with this or don't we? But I'm just having a hard time understanding again, who who who's who's petitioning for it? Why? What is it? What's gained? And and how does that hurt all of us while all this stuff is in limbo and undecided? Again, thanks for your time.
And he, I believe, several members of the mission of society and our partners. Thank you for pointing that out. Well, Mr. Chair, if I might, one of the roles of planning commission is actually to help protect the little being of our systems. And planning is definitely one of those ways for that. And, you know, you mentioned before about enterprise, that is so very, very important. And that is starting on the levels of community of municipalities to provide and environment, provide the price to flourish. Yes, a part of that is in the spouse of its owning, to help protect our neighborhoods. And, uh, uh, there's a lot of times that neighborhoods have been, um, overlooked and, and underappreciated from time to time, and, uh, and we've had some developers that have come in here and promised one thing. And things resold and things change. And right now, um, we have not seen a true plan with this decent property. We promised something two years ago. Uh, one guy, this, this group has not been here before us. Uh, it was another group. In B A N H, I think it was, they promised a lot of it. But we promised that they already have all the details worked out. All the measure. Two ways, two ways in and out. That has not been, that is not accurate. And obviously, the, um, all range plans that they had, um, it's not coming through mission because they're not here. They were here and all measure would not be here. Uh, two-way egress is super important. And I know that still is not being impressed. So, but this is about, in my opinion, is protecting our citizens. Because we all know what the Congress went through, probably two years of war and death. And that upset quite a few lives, and that is a part of what this commission is about. City council is about, but local government is about. I mean, there are a lot of folks that don't like being told that they've got to move their house, already beat in front of the road. Or they can't build their shed on the back property line, it's got to be bought, it's something wrong. So, government is coming in and it's because of the, the safety and the health of, of the community. And I'm sorry, Tom Johnson could probably tell us why it's so important to have so much egress, uh, or maybe not egress, but property on the side of buildings, five, a thirty-foot setback on the front and twenty from the back and ten on the sides. I'm sorry, the fire department had something to do with that, that, uh, back in the day when all those rules and regs came before us. I don't know why they had, uh, twenty feet, uh, ten, who came into effect. There's definitely some reason in there for public safety. And, um, you know, we all know what the future holds, that's why I have heard me, um, several times and say, bring your shovel ready project, bring your shovel ready project, because no one knows what the future is gonna hold. So again, what happened over here with Congress, it upset a lot of lives of them. The drawings, there are many of them, of course. Like the sergeant stated correctly about wrong, they did something wrong, pulled up and pretty much hopped in the face. Basically, you don't know the paranormal bit, that you're two-way in egress, I think you brought that up. Uh, gee, um, you know, when you started to, not finished, it, uh, in the pity. So you know, if, if, if I'm gonna sit up here and work for the community, make it a safer community. We need true and accurate information. So far, yeah, we have been providing, keep flying around, keep giving them the route to the, to the, to all the, the, the.
Go right there.
I'm Joe Edwards, I'm a volunteer, I'm representing the developer.
Yes.
And I want, I've got a suggestion to help grant this, then if you find yourselves in this commission.
Hmm.
But, but I'll point out, we're not here asking you to make any change. What is, is, is we're assisted, that's all the issues that the mayor is bringing to the table, we respect those issues. Are gonna be here the day after you vote, if you vote to change the, the zone. Every one of those issues are still gonna exist, and someone is gonna have to come to you with their development plan. To answer the question about access, to answer the question about green space. Instead of to change the zone today without answering those questions. Makes no sense. To change the zoning because you don't want to, or you do want to have two-way access. Still does answer the question of where's the access, where's the green space? So my suggestion is, since the developer has indicated a willingness to look at this issue, not prepared, obviously, to say, well, it's this particular one, or it's fifty days later. Is to talk to the people who, who are gonna be the developer, because if they are gonna present you with a development plan that needs to be approved and consider the chief's questions about access and whatnot. Is for the mayor to say, I will pass my petition, not asking them to withdraw it. Just, I'll pass it so that everything comes before you in March. The question was asked correctly, are we now, do we now have competing petitions? So what do we do, we've got one that says, change the zone, you vote yes. Then the very next month, you're gonna be asked to change it back, yet nothing would have happened in that effort. None of those questions would have been answered either way. And so, um, with respect to the mayor's position, I would ask that he pass his petition so that it goes to the March document. Give the developer a chance to meet with the people who are gonna be the developers, that are gonna come before you with a plan. That the, 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 it's, it's unusual for the plan to have to precede the zoning. I appreciate the mayor's position that it, that it does if it were not zoned. And we were asking that it be zoned some other way, that you have to present a plan, city's not presenting a plan, so they're not answering the questions. So give us a chance to present to you a cohesive, uh, answer to these questions. And, and see if the, uh, proposed developer can commit to a given amount of F A R for his property. And, and present to you something that, that makes sense. That's truly a development plan question, and, and should be raised, it should be answered. But it's not being answered by the petition as it's before you today. So I would just request that the mayor ask the planning commission to pass his petition to the marching. That way it can all be heard at one time. You don't have competing, you may have competing petitions, but the gist of the competition is the same. You're gonna vote yes or no to train, to change the zone, or you're gonna vote yes or no to leave part of it alone. And, and, uh, and do exactly what the mayor wants on the front, which is, that's the piece of it. So it's, it's not as competing. If, if you go the way the mayor wants, you're gonna be faced with the question of, and do we change it back? And so, Mr. Mayor, I would respectfully request that you just pass your petition and let it come before this group in March. That gives us an opportunity then to meet with the developer, to see what they, they, they can do, see what information that they can provide to you that, that might give you more comfort. To potentially withdraw your commission, your petition in March, I think that's a little bit.
I would consider that if you guys will consider, if you guys will withdraw your petition to resell the two front parcels.
Well, I'm not sure that I understand that, Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't wanna avoid your question. What you're asking is to zone it all beachy. Like, I mean, we're asking to say, just leave it alone, we want to, uh, zone the front beachy, we want to leave the back alone. And so, the, the, the planning commission is gonna have to decide what to do with the site. And so, they can vote to support your petition in March, which, which shoots down our petition. And if they were, and if they were actually back-to-back petitions, they'd vote for yours and vote against ours. Or they would be there, they would vote against yours and say, we have now resolved in their minds that the, uh, answers to the questions have been sufficient, as to whether or not there's some F A R, uh, amount. Or whether, quite frankly, if in that period of time it gives this developer with the, the contractor a, an opportunity to admit this petition, say, all right, we want the beachy up front, just as you did it. We want the, the, the middle so state to be, uh, left alone or whole. And we will amend our petition to have F A R in this area, whatever that might be. But then change the question, it's gonna be voting one way or another with either or both petitions before.
And create a council as no recommendation.
Well, to vote, I mean, that's certainly their prerogative, that, that they can vote, and that's a permit vote. Or if they vote and it's not the reckless that votes one way or the other, it then automatically goes to the city council as no recommendation. So there's only three options, there can be a recommendation, there can be an absolute no, or there can be, I think, maybe four. There can be, uh, we, we send it up with no recommendation, or because the vote is not proper, or we're not completely uh, done yes or no by the prescribed number of voters, then it goes to the city council with no recommendation. So it can, without, without taking action, it can go either way. So I, I'm not asking that, that we do anything different. I, I don't think, I don't think that removing our petition really does anything because we want the front to be beachy. And you want the front to be beachy, so we're totally agreeing on what those front a petition should be. But, and, and I don't think the city is prejudiced by, by pushing it off. It, it's just we, we kind of invest, push off the, the liberation. But it gives us time to talk to you, uh, in particular into our buyer, developer, to see what more we might be able to do to satisfy you and kind of take them off hot seat.
Thank you. We're all down.
Well, yeah, our role was up here to protect the city, absolutely, and, and, uh. Brother of the city.
Yeah, come on, come on.
I'm very, uh, I'm a little very, uh, self-suffice engineering, and I agree with you, Mayor, on the shovel rig project. Come on, so, so ready, because plans can change, right? Over time, what is wanted and what is needed, change over time, so a shovel rig project, really important. And when you go back to how we all got to this point, back in August of nineteen, when H first made the presentation. It was for market apartments, high-quality, high-end apartments to accommodate, um, just, just the working-class people that, that leave those places, that may be here for a year, a year, two years, or ready for a mortgage again, but need a place, need a place to live, maybe a white collar, go on. So we got way down the road with that product, uh, with that, with that design mindset, even to the point where we had uh, two-way egress egress in that facility. Uh, unfortunately, uh, went down April, May, end of twenty twenty. The investors that were lined up to make this happen for M B H pulled back because COVID concerns. Economy was in, was not, was not doing what, what they expected it to do, and everything withdrew. At that point, um, M B H, which had experience in substance, I was having. At that point, I could decide, no, I, I know I promised market rate, but that's gone, I can do this. He didn't do that, he rather fell on his sword for, uh, for what he promised, instead of doing something that he did not promise. So I get a lot of respect and amount of process because he, he kept, he kept, he couldn't deliver what he promised because of the pandemic, but he did not, he didn't shy away from it. And now, uh, with the new developer coming in, uh, as I said, I don't have a lot of experience with them, but, uh, what I do know is that, uh, Justin, Justin, this group, I've been, I've been wanting to make something happen here. And the pandemic really put in a situation where things had to force a way. And so, with the moratorium coming, uh, expiring possibly at thirty, on April thirty, maybe highest time, I mean, what would be the, what would be the problem of waiting until, see what happens at April thirty? If the moratorium continues, then this is a reason to continue. If it doesn't, then, if it doesn't continue, then we have something to talk about. I mean, does that, that makes sense, I mean, what I'm thinking is, is where the longer you're at. Shovel ready, it was shovel ready, but.
Thanks, Chase.
Welcome back, I was to start a dialogue back and forth in veteran and just bring with you, but, uh, sources I had, there never was a working agreement for the two ways in and out. Uh, so, and I think that was one of the biggest pain point on that one, but, so I really don't think it covered, but, uh, the situation there. So, and I guess, uh, goes back and also to every place as well. Um, the drive is made, go by and watch the dynamics of the projects.
Well, I'm not asking, excuse me, I'm not asking you to pull, I'm asking you to postpone, so that they come up sometimes. I, I'm not asking you to back off your position. So it's a little bit of difference in that. I'd like to actually do with you, but I'm not.
Oh, I guess I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what protection to get, just in some national office that the plan would be processed and orders is in place won't? I guess that's what, I guess in a nutshell, that's my question. Is how, how change, forcing a change to the zoning provides any protection, we don't want that.
It all depends on the region. Saw what happened with Congress, saw how upset the community.
They were upset, but.
Saw how they got, you know, how we finished, we saw how upset they got, there's some properties just north of this, of this, uh, same piece of property that's gonna be cutting the forest or bears build outs, we saw some properties just west of this, I believe, that has come forest for, for, for some development. And so, right now, what we were sold seemed to be a good fit for this. What if these other developers come in, they start making some developments, and then this piece of property does not fit in all fully? That is the potential for our communities. Um. You mentioned the Congress, and, and it was oriented and they put in a second entrance, which we were looking for the entire time. And so we had two, two points of egress through Congress now. And I've driven by there, it's a, is a senior living apartment, is what, what is there? No, no, it's, it's, no, and that's what I said, we didn't approve that one, but it is, uh, the apartments, they do seem to be nice apartments. Uh, is there, is there an issue with those apartments? Uh, I think the other piece of property you're talking about was, uh, see, it was your back, if you want to see your classifications. But, but is there an issue with, with, what, what developed from that is two, two, two ways in and out of the neighborhood. And from the last time I went by there, it's rise of bar. The, the art for designation evidently does frighten a few of your constituents in, in this community. However, millennials are not always buying houses and, and they can be part of the network too. I know a lot of people that even that we're gonna work out with, that are military and their families move away from here. And they live in apartments because their wives live in, um, North Health England, and they, they want to live on this side of, uh, town. They don't want to live in Montgomery because they want to drive, drive destination north. We can provide that for them. I, 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 I don't understand the, the, how we're protecting anything, and I don't understand that. I, I don't know if it's a substitute for some other type of language, and, and, um, I personally don't have an issue with apartment living. Uh, most of the time, if an apartment costs two thousand dollars a month, and you can buy a house for, um, seven, I mean, eight, twelve hundred or a thousand a month for a mortgage. Um, I don't see how that's, you know, uh, it's temporary housing a lot of times, because we want to live in a apartment. Um, uh, I, I don't see what you're protecting, but, uh, I, I, I probably don't, don't understand, but, okay. Um. Yes, sir.
Just two more points. For those that weren't on the planning commission 19 months ago, the issue of the two pet parcels, A and B, let's say, B, that go on Old Farm, those were accidentally rezoned along with C, and the error was discovered. So that, those were always intended to be big. So take those off the table, because that's not in contention, as, as the gentleman told you, that the city is in agreement with big, and they were intended to be big. But the other issue I worry about is boxing yourself in by March. You have a moratorium that doesn't expire until April 30. It could get extended. Now, Mr. Stevens says that you're modifying your zoning ordinance, and the comp plan, I would hope, would get approved. So my only question, from a planning perspective, is, is the goalpost moving while the developers are negotiating with the city and whatever? And I caution you about that, because which, which ordinance, and which rule, which comp plan will be in place at the time that this all gets worked out? So I don't know that I box yourself in to your March meeting.
Scott, just from my second, you got a little understanding of, you know, it's going back and forth right now, about what was best. But when you're looking at making recommendations, and where do you get to, why do you say, we got enough apartments, we have enough this? I mean, what other things are you looking at to make that determination? And, you know, I mean, what is land space, what other things we're going to have in the community and the environment, when you look at, are we going to make recommendations? Would we use smaller, or we do not need to?
Well, the recommendation from the, in the staff report, those are, those are, we first look at the conference plan. So the currently adopted conference plan has this, makes these transitional. We use that as kind of the baseline, look surrounding areas, and just professional opinion of that. Your question about, I guess, the capacity of apartments, that's a, that's a tough one. You know, we certainly look at, you know, the city's infrastructure, and can our streets handle, can our sewer, can our water, can our, can our schools, can our parks, you know, all the infrastructure, facilities. And, you know, again, it's, it goes back to the community, self-commission, and council, may have to answer that. You know, I was most recently living in Tuscaloosa. There's a whole lot of more apartments in Tuscaloosa overall, or, or, you know, every city's, you know, obviously. So a lot of that kind of goes back to what the community wants, I think. So, you know, Collstown inherently is going to need a lot more multifamily, and denser, denser properties, somewhere like, you know, Prattville. You know, there is a bench you need. You need a variety of housing types. You need big houses, you need small houses, you need the multifamily, townhomes, condos, you need, because there's all sorts of different people out there, professions and names and wants. So that, that question's really hard to answer, just because there's not a set number that we can just come to and say, once we have 100, that's too many, that's enough.
So the comp plan, what was their reasoning? What was there?
I don't think the current, the, the current one, or the post one?
Or the other one?
I don't know if it had, no, they did a market study, and that was more of a, what might the market carry, or what might the market demand? Not necessarily what the city needs, or has to have. It was just more of a, if, if the city was considering townhomes, or true townhomes, or, you know, outdoor garden homes, or really large estate lot homes, how many do we think, or how many is this, you know, economists or whoever, how many would be demanded by the market in the next 10 years? So that's what that was. The comp plan, I don't think it necessarily has like a number or a care capacity, but it does make recommendations for if we are going to have higher density to place it near transportation corridors. That typically makes sense. Maybe closer to how traditionally you see transition between commercial to multifamily, or a denser family toward the less dense. So maybe commercial to apartments, to townhomes, to single-family residential, to state lots, or something like that. So, and again, I don't know if that's necessarily numbers, but it does talk about the patterns of where my best work is.
Because I guess that's how it, you kind of say what the law versus the law. You know, so this, this, this report is just more of a, any, and rather than anything else, we'll do that.
It, it's kind of the roadmap for the growth. So, you know, the city's growing, that's not slowing down, it certainly has not. But, and it's more than just land use and housing. It talks about transportation, and fire stations, public facilities, parks, and growth, industrial growth, things like that. So one aspect is residential land use. Again, it's, the recommendations are just based on what would be best for the community. If, if we want denser development, these areas, it should probably go. And we do need some dense development. We do need some less dense development. So, and that, that's, that's what the staff and the planning commission uses when these zoning requests come in, and development.
Thanks, Scott.
Anything else, or, or John?
Yes, sir.
And I'm hoping I'm hearing correctly, because I'm hoping that possibly by the next meeting, some new development plan will be presented that includes, I understand right now, you can't say 15 acres, it's going to be FAR. Personally, I found the development plan presented better encouraging. But I don't, I think leaving it R4, you know, you can present anything, but you still can build, you know, R4. I understand that's what it's zoned. R4 by nature, to me, is commercial. It's not residential. It is for people to live, but it is a commercial enterprise that's running the development. And I don't know, and this is a work session, so this is something, I would hope that in our zoning, or however we could do this, so that we don't find ourselves in Rochester Hills, or, or this situation. Again, I know we have time limits on sketch plans, or sub divisions, you know, it's been so long, well, no, it's out. You have to start the process over. And this isn't about this development, but I'm thinking, because of this situation, because of other situations, we need something in place, that if something's zoned R4, and doesn't pan out in the shovel-ready time, because I can't see us as a commission, or, let me, I can't speak. I cannot see me voting on something to be R4, that they're going to tell me it's going to be developed in 10 years. You know, if I'm voting for it, I'm thinking it's going to be developed upon, you know, or soon after. So I think that is a problem that needs to be addressed. So we don't have this problem yet. You know, if we vote on it to be R4, and it's not developed in a certain timeframe, you then it regirders back to FAR, you know.
That is a good, I, 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 again, I'd like to give them some latitude because of COVID and the situation, and the market, and.
And I'm thinking if they bring something that shows this, we want this to be this part, and I know you cannot tell now, but when you come back, you can say, 10, 15, nine acres FAR. Because I think keeping it R4, if you tell me that's your intent, well, that's fine, but you're going to sell it, and it's zoned R4, and they can do whatever they want, you know. So that does nothing for my assurance factor. But I'm hoping that maybe it is.
Just by way of clarification, though, man, they can't do anything they won't. They still have to come back before you. They still have to answer your traffic questions. They still have to answer your access questions. They still have to answer any questions. So this, all of those issues don't just go away because it's R4.
But as long as they satisfy the R4 requirements, they can build whatever they want. So if it's zoned out, they can build R4.
Whatever your R4 designation allows.
So, which FAR does not allow R4, you know? That's mine.
So to answer your question, I don't know, it's the work sessions, I'm not sure what specifically comes from it. So I don't know if we have more time, if that's a decision that's been made. So I'm welcome to hear what changes may be to the timeline, or if we do have to March, before I can answer that. But that comes from this meeting. We're going to work with what we have, and together, any type of plans that we can. I can't speak out of what they can exactly commit to, but I can certainly put forth plans, if we have the time to.
Yeah, and I certainly, I don't want to put a timeline on our input, but we certainly, I think we could give them a day or so, that they would understand the price of property, so that R4 is more valuable. We all give you the opportunity to pass that property along. All right, is there any other question, comments?